Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three Twalton City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance tonight led by Counselor Reyes.
Thanks, Dan. Hannah Rehar. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
All right, so that brings us to announcements. Our first announcement is proclamation declaring October first through seventh, two thousand and twenty three, Ban Books Week in the city of Twalton. Do we have any city presentation? We're just going right to proclamation, okay? And then we read back Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. I'm going to read the proclamation declaring October first through seventh, two thousand and twenty three Ban Book Week in the city of Twalton. Whereas the freedom to read is essential for a strong democracy protected by the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, along with the freedom of speech, and whereas some individuals, groups, and public authorities work to remove or limit access to reading materials, to label views as controversial, to distribute lists of books or authors considered objectionable, and to purge libraries of materials reflecting the diversity of society. And whereas the role of libraries is to collect and make available diverse works of information reflective of many perspectives and lived experiences, including materials reflecting the experience of marginalized and underrepresented groups of people. And whereas books do not require readers to agree with topics or themes, but instead allow readers to explore and engage with differing perspectives to form and inform their own views. And whereas Americans still favor free enterprise in ideas and expression and can be trusted to exercise critical judgment, to recognize propaganda and misinformation, and to make their own decisions about what they read and believe, and to exercise the responsibilities that accompany this freedom. And whereas Ban Books Week celebrates the freedom to choose or the freedom to express one's opinion, even if that opinion might be considered unorthodox or unpopular, and stresses the importance of ensuring the availability of those unorthodox or unpopular viewpoints to all who wish to read them. And whereas the Twalton City Council supports the rights of all to have the opportunity to read a wide array of books reflecting a multitude of viewpoints and perspectives. And whereas the Twalton City Council supports writers' freedom of expression and the freedom of all Americans to read books without government censorship. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that Twalton celebrates Ban Books Week, October first through seventh, two thousand and twenty three. We encourage free people to read freely now and forever, introduced and adopted this twenty fifth day of September, two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you. That brings us to announcement number two, a new employee introduction, Nora Ames, our new court clerk. Welcome. Come on up.
My name is Courtney Cameron. I'm the court administrator and I'm here to introduce our new court clerk, Nora Ames.
Nora comes to us with thirty years customer service. And she, as a court clerk, she will be receiving citations from the police department, creating files, assisting defendants in court, in the courtroom with the judge. She's part of our finance department and in Nora's free time, she's a tech enthusiast. And she spends most of her time with her children. She has four children, running them to their activities. Yeah.
All right. Well, welcome. When did you start?
When did I start?
Yeah.
September eleventh. Pardon me. I should, yes, September eleventh is the first day. Yes.
And how's it been so far?
Amazing. I'm very, very happy to be here. Yeah.
All right. Ever you want to tell us a bit more about yourself or your want to be, I mean, some people, you know, chat a little bit or
I moved to Oregon in two thousand and seventeen for love, so for all the right reasons, and I love my wife and the state of Oregon. Probably my wife more than the state of Oregon, but that's, you know, that's obvious. But, you know, Twalton's an amazing city. I live just over the hill in Progress Ridge at the like south end of Beaverton. So, you know, my kids lucked out, but they can just walk to school now at mountainside. So it's amazing for them. And just a very short commute for me. So I'm super stoked to be a part of, you know, the legal system and a part of this great city here. So I'm very, very excited. Courtney is amazing and the team in the courthouse is also really, really awesome. So I'm really, really excited to be here and get to be part of this great city and help everything move smoothly here in the courthouse. So thank you guys so much for the warm welcome and everything that's been going on here the last couple of weeks.
Well, very welcome, very much welcome to you. And I know I'm not supposed to say that or it's you don't look old enough to have thirty years of customer experience.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do have a picture in my, you know, in my attic that is slowly aging and I am not.
That's good for you.
Yeah.
Glad to hear that. Well, welcome and thank you for coming tonight and best wishes here. I think you can be very busy with our court. We've got, I know we've grown over the years and the nice thing we hear about is that people are treated fairly and the court clerks are very respectful and that's exactly what we want, that we be treated equally and correctly. So again, welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for happiness.
All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in Zoom land who would like any public comments in public Zoom land, Nicole? This would be, if you're in Zoom, this is your opportunity for public comment. Nope. All right. Anyone in the audience tonight? You don't need to be signed up? No one? All right. That'll bring us on to consent agenda. The consent agenda items considered routine, they will be adopted by one motion tonight unless someone in the city council will like them pulled and removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session irregular meeting minutes of September eleventh, two thousand and twenty three. Consideration of resolution number fifty seven, twenty six dash twenty three, awarding the contract for steel, steel, no, street sweeping operations to Great Western Sweeping and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract. Item number three, consideration of resolution number fifty seven, twenty seven dash twenty three, authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept community development block grant funds to complete the Juanita Pole Center siding replacement project. And finally, item number four, consideration of resolution number fifty seven, twenty eight dash twenty three, authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept community development block grant funds to complete Sagert Street and Las Casitas slash Stone Ridge Neighborhood Pedestrian Safety Enhances. Were any council like to have an item pulled tonight or heard later?
I recommend we adopt the consent agenda as read. Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstained. It's unanimous. That brings us to general business. Item number one, consideration of ordinance number one, four, eight, one dash twenty three. Amending the municipal code regarding service of summons for civil infractions. Standards applicable to building, grading permits, and stop work orders. Welcome. How are you Suzanne?
Fine.
All right, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Suzanne Tyler. I'm the building official and I am here tonight to present ordinance number fourteen, eighty one dash twenty three. I'll be outlining what this ordinance is and why it's in front of you. The ordinance would amend the Muni Code to adopt the most current codes in the state of Oregon. Since this language will be incorporated into the Muni Code, if adopted, it is adopted by ordinance. The first item in the ordinance is service of summons and this item is included simply to update the Muni Code to reference rule seven D of the Oregon Rules of Civil Procedure, not a specific addition. So the previous Muni Code referenced the nineteen ninety one edition, so that was quite a while ago. And so we're just simply doing some housekeeping to update it to reference the most current standard, which currently is the two thousand and twenty one edition. The second item in the ordinance is the standards applicable to building. This ordinance language reflects the changes of the section of the Muni Code adopting the most current, currently adopted building codes in the state of Oregon. Wow.
Boring, yeah.
This includes fences, retaining walls, tanks, cell towers, flagpoles, ground mounted photovoltaic, photovoltaic systems, signs and pools. This ordinance language includes items that were previously included for regulation in the state building codes, but they were deleted from this code addition to allow authorities to have the the ability to locally adopt these code provisions. And most jurisdictions do adopt these in the state. So without adoption of these codes, the building division is unable to regulate these items and protect people and property. Additionally, with regard to grading, this is a section of the code that has been deleted from the current codes for building divisions throughout the state. The authorities having jurisdiction do not have the authority to regulate it under the building code. So it has been removed from the two thousand and twenty two Oregon Structural Specialty Code, and so we're amending the Muni Code language to reflect that omission, and we don't have the option to adopt it under the building code. And the third item in the ordinance is the addition of language regarding stop work orders. So this language was previously included in, in previous code additions, and it was again removed from the two thousand and twenty two edition by the state of Oregon and authorities having jurisdiction, building divisions have the ability to adopt this language by ordinance. And it's recommended that the Muni Code be updated to include this language so that the building division has the authority to protect people and property from unsafe and unpermitted work. And my recommendation is that the council approve this ordinance as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Questions for Suzanne?
I do have one question in regards to flagpoles. Why is it, why twenty five feet? What's the, what would be the concern over twenty five feet on a flagpole?
The concern is that when you have a flag that is flying during windy conditions and you have and you have, I'll say, a large flag that's over twenty five feet, and usually they're the larger flags. You have the potential for a lot of loading on this, and if it fell over due to the, you know, wind on the, on the flag, it could be a danger to people and property. And so the requirement to have flagpoles that are tall like this included in the, in the code for regulation is so that they can be properly secured to, to the ground so that in case of a, you know, a wind activity that they don't fall over and hurt people or property. That's the really basic.
Really basic.
Yeah.
What's the fee for that? Just curious.
I do not know what that fee is off the top of my head, but the building permits are typically based upon a evaluation. So when a valuation is provided for a project that represents the cost of the, the project labor materials, then that valuation is used to generate the building permit fees associated with the review, inspection, and the administrative costs of issuing a permit and regulating that flagpole or any other structure. It's going to be on the lower end.
Sure, sure. Have, have we had issues with, with flagpoles that have been over twenty five feet wide, tall that, that in the past in your experience?
I haven't, I, I've been here less than two years and I have not seen any issues with any flagpoles in this jurisdiction.
And just curious, who would be the person to go out there and inspect that the flagpole should it be installed?
That would be a building inspector because it's regulated under the Oregon Structural Specialty Code or the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. And so it would be after the permit has been issued, it would be a building inspector who would go out there and verify that any footings that were designed were appropriately placed in the right locations and, and any rebar that was included would be placed properly and that the concrete was, the pad was sized appropriately for the design.
So it's a lot there, just for
As I know, probably more information than you wanted.
The other question I had is around fence. Typically, it has been six feet, but I'm seeing seven feet here. What's
That changed in the last few code cycles. It, it was six feet. You're absolutely correct. And it did get changed to, to permit a height of seven feet without, without requiring a permit. And I think maybe two code cycles ago, I think that throughout the state of Oregon, it was felt that a seven foot height would be should be allowed and didn't cause any unsightly issues or issues with, again, wind loading, which would be a factor for damage, say during a windstorm, but it changed.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I have a motion because this is a first and second reading style since this ordinance.
I'll motion for a first reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, eight, one dash twenty three. Second.
I have a motion as, a motion and a second for first reading by title only of ordinance one, four, eight, one dash twenty three. Any discussions on the motions? Since I think this is a roll call, so Counselor Gonzalez.
Don't we have to do readings?
Then we have to vote on it.
Oh, we're just voting.
You have to vote. Counselor Gonzalez.
So yes.
Counselor Sacco. Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
I vote aye also. Now we read.
Ordinance number fourteen, eighty one dash twenty three, an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding service of summons for civil infractions. Standards applicable to building, grading permits, and stop work orders.
Your second reading.
I motion for a second reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen, eighty one dash twenty three. Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading by title only of ordinance one, four, eight, one dash twenty three. Any discussions on the motions? Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye also.
Ordinance number fourteen, eighty one dash twenty three, an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding service of summons for civil infractions. Standards applicable to building, grading permits, and stop work orders.
I motion for adoption of ordinance number fourteen, eighty one dash twenty three. Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance one, four, eight, one dash twenty three. Any discussions on those motions? I'll start on the other hand. Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
And chair votes yes. It's unanimous. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, so that brings us the recommendation from the council committee on advisory appointments. I believe there's three people being appointed. The council, the committee members consist of Counsel President Pratt, Counsel Reyes, and Sacco.
Yeah, we just, we met a couple of weeks ago, seems like. But we had a great time interviewing, I would say, about nine people that, from our community that signed up to be considered for one of these committees. And we actually are very proud of those individuals that came up and, and stepped up to volunteer and be a part of this. Obviously, we can have everyone, but I do encourage people out there that you keep checking our website and see what opportunities are open for you and do not stop trying, just try again and because there is a lot of work that we have for people to and help us out with. But we now have, I'd like the other counselors to speak, but thank you all for being a part of this and I look forward to meeting more of you.
And as Counselor Reyes said, we have many positions open, so I want to take a moment to read what those are. For the Twalton Architectural Review Board, we have open position for an engineer architect and three lay members. We have for the library advisory committee, one student position open. The budget advisory committee, we have three open positions, one student position. Core area parking, we have four open positions. And it looks like all of these positions are asked to apply by October twentieth. And without further ado, Valer, Counselor Pratt, would you like to read our three recommendations?
Sure. We have two people recommended for the library advisory committee, Ashley Payne and Paul Turn, Tomback, or Turnback. Sorry, that's me. Can't read my glasses. And then for architectural review board, we have Patrick Gainer.
I'll make a motion to consider the recommendations of the, or I guess to approve the recommendations of the CCAA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations from the CCAA and discussions on those motions. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstentions? It's unanimous. It brings us to item number three, prioritization of planning division work. This will be led by Steve Cooper. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time tonight. I am Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm here to present the planning division work plan to council. Thank you. Before we get into the long range portion of the planning work plan, I'm going to talk a little bit about who we are and some of the other work that we do. So our planning division is small but mighty, consisting of myself as the leader, along with, we have Erin, who you've met on several occasions, our senior planner. Keith, our associate planner, Madeline, our relatively new higher assistant planner, and then we have Lindsay, who is our office coordinator, whom we also share with some of the other divisions in community development. That picture there on the left hand part of the slide is a volunteer day that we organize with the help of Jackie and volunteer services and Tom and his team in parks. We went to Ibach Park, which was fun. The rest of my team had not been to Ibach Park before, which you all know is a wonderful place. So exciting to take them there and get to see something out from behind their desks. So we got to do some tree planting, as shown in the picture, as well as build a little wall to assist with erosion and stormwater, which you all learned about probably more than you wanted to know about tonight. So what do we do? We do a lot of things. This maybe doesn't summarize all of the work that we do, but I think it's a good starting point for our conversation tonight. The first part of the work that we do is current planning, and so that's what we think of when we think about someone visiting the planning counter. That is in comparison to long range planning, which is forward looking, and in contrast, current planning is a little bit more, I would say reactive to a development application, for example. We also assist the council with housing policy. There's lots of state rules recently that we help monitor and track and digest and figure out how to best implement. And then I think important, but maybe not necessarily as well known portion of what we do is that we assist with public outreach, so we support our planning commission, our staff act as liaison, and so the planning commission is part of the way that we satisfy our statewide planning goal number one for citizen involvement. And then we also have an architectural review board and we have our Counselor Hillier is our chair, which is wonderful. And then we also do a good deal of public outreach. I am involved with the land use officers and meet with them quarterly on this community involvement organizations. And I think the one other little fun fact, which is unique to other volunteer boards and commissions in the city, is that both the planning commission and the architectural review board have actual decision making power for land use decisions, and so oversight of those boards and commissions can get a little bit trickier because we have to advise them on legal and technical and procedural things in addition to the other wonderful things they do as volunteer bodies. So this slide here, another piece of what we do, this is the current planning piece or the, the planning counter. We take in land use applications at our planning counter. Last fiscal year, we did two hundred and nineteen total. This is a slight increase over the prior year, but is, I think, fairly representative of the workload that we do year to year. As we'll discuss in a little greater detail on the next slide, we are often legally required to act on these land use applications in a really short time. And even for those applications that we do not have a legally specified timeline, there's a need to act quickly on them. In fact, probably in most cases quicker than our legally required applications. And that's in order to maintain the high level of customer service that people expect from Twalton, and you see that across other divisions like the building division in community development, for example, in our engineering division, the expectations are thusly high as well. So the typical land use process, and this is for our, what we call type two and type three and type four applications, those applications that require public notice. The typical timeline is that we get an application submitted in the door at the planning counter. We have thirty days for us to review. We typically try to review it in more like two to three weeks out of that thirty days. If the application is missing pieces, it's incomplete, then the applicant has the burden then to supply the missing information within a hundred and eighty days. If they don't do that, then the application gets returned back to them. If they do, the application is deemed complete, and that triggers a hundred and twenty day timeline, which sounds kind of like maybe it's a long time, but in reality, in order to maintain our ability to have local hearings and appeals of these decisions, we typically are aiming to have our staff making a decision, or in the case of an architectural review board or planning commission, making a decision at a hearing on these applications within sixty days out of a hundred and twenty days, because that other sixty days is necessary to maintain the opportunity for continued hearings and other kinds of stuff in order for the city to conclude its decision making process in a hundred and twenty days total. And so what that means in there is that we have a comment period, which is fourteen days minimum for a decision or twenty days if that decision has a hearing. And so a common thing that we hear from people in the community is that, you know, it's a really short time in which they have to comment on land use applications, and I would say that we agree. But this is the reason why is that we have a really short time to make the decisions as well, and so it's felt and shared, and that's a little explanation of what we do. And I think it's also a little bit of an explanation to help you all understand that, you know, of these two hundred and nineteen applications, a considerable number of them, which we don't control the flux of them, we don't get to control whether or not people apply to do stuff, is really not on our timeline. It's on someone else's timeline. It's on the state's timeline and it's on the applicant's timeline. And so to the extent that we have bandwidths available for other work, it is also to some degree at the mercy of how many land use applications we're getting, how complex they are. Hopefully, having a continuity of staff, which we've been lucky to have for some time. We've had our newest staff member for coming up on two years now, so very little turnover, which is fortunate in this day and age. So obviously, land use applications are a really important part of what they do. They're certainly the core of what we do. However, we also spend quite a great deal of time and attention on calls and emails, which are really inquiries either leading up to a land use application or in a lot of cases, helping the public digest and understand land use rules, checking whether or not something else that they've observed in the community is legal. helping the public digest and understand land use rules, checking whether or not something else that they've observed in the community is legal and so forth. Um this obviously doesn't count in-person visits to our planning counter, um which are certainly lower, but you know, not insignificant. Um and I will note, as you can see from the trend on the graph, um these calls and emails have pretty steadily risen since we began tracking this data about a year and a half ago. Um and just a little fun fact here, based on roughly how many days in a calendar year were open for business. This means we receive about sixteen calls and emails a day that we have to respond to. So a staff of three and a half people doing that, plus myself. So it's a lot of work. Before we jump uh feet-first into a discussion of long-range planning projects, I would like to point out that the work that we do is grounded in council's priorities. As you can see from your most recent placemat, community development and the planning division in particular are responsible for the implementation of a number of council-identified priorities. And so the purpose of tonight's discussion, um I think, is to help us help you achieve these goals. So this is the first of two slides that give an overview of our long-range project list. I'm not gonna read through these in detail. I will in a couple of subsequent slides. Um but the long and the short of it is that the main categories of identified projects on this slide have been grouped into either, one, uh the top bunch is underway or ongoing projects. And then the second is projects that are required to meet a legal need or mitigate for a potential future legal risk. And then the second summary slide of long-range projects consists of projects that in the first group are council-identified projects based on that council placemat prioritization. And then the second bundle is projects that we've had brought to our attention by a community member, a property owner, or someone in the development community um as potential needs for a long-range project. And so taking these uh kind of four long-range project categories one by one. So in the first bundle here, ongoing projects, we have the transportation system plan update, which I think you all know about. And so that is uh we're fortunate there to have Mike McCarthy, our city engineer, and uh Cody, our management analyst, also assisting along with myself and Erin from our team. So that is, at least right now, probably a mild amount of work, but certainly is going to start ramping up soon, and particularly towards the end of the project where we see adoption, which is the most planning-heavy portion of the project. There will certainly be um all hands at that point. And we'll show a little bit on our draft kind of example plan, um how that workload variation and how much it means to us at various stages of the project will could play out. Um and then we have our housing production strategy implementation. So that housing production strategy was developed, was uh adopted by council in twenty nineteen. It's a five-year plan, so we're a couple years in, just about halfway. And again, that the amount of effort that is required of that project is kind of varies depending on how much implementation we have scoped. And so that is one of the things where we're lucky to have a little bit of flexibility and can have a conversation about how much um involvement is expected of us. And then
I'm sorry, Steve, can you advance the slide?
Oh, yes, thank you, Sharon. Sorry about that. Um apologies. And then lastly, Climate Action Plan, which um you have seen uh and heard several presentations on so far. Um it's not quite been uh accepted by council, but I think, as you all know, or will know very shortly, a number of these strategies and actions that are identified within that Climate Action Plan um would require changes to the development code or the comprehensive plan, or otherwise need support from community development and many of them needing planning support specifically. And so again, you know, there's some future conversation about what that looks like, but even as the plan is going through adoption, um Erin, our senior planner, is working with uh the Public Works Team on uh coordination there. And so she's spending at least some of her time right now on it and potentially more in the future. So this list is pretty long. Um some of them, you know, are maybe not necessarily as uh scary as they seem. Some of them are a little bit more straightforward, so I'll just try to walk through them pretty quickly. Um so the climate-friendly and equitable communities state uh rulemaking is certainly driving a great deal of this list. Um so we have a parking code update. We um were able to get a deferral of this from the state until this summer, but it's coming up. Um it's hopefully a pretty straightforward um thing, but it still needs to have a development code update and action. And then um we have a CFAC non-parking development code update. This is something that is triggered by our transportation system plan update. We hope to be able to get a grant for it, and it won't be done, it won't be due until the transportation system plan is uh actually adopted. So we have a little bit of lead time to plan for that. Cleaner, objective development code update. So um I don't know how much you're aware of this, but there has been um recent lawsuits, particular, one in particular was um against Washington County for not having a clear and objective um natural resources, what's also known as Goal Five um code. Their code, because natural resources are a little bit of an intangible and sometimes hard to figure out how to regulate. Did not have clear and objective requirements, and so they were taken into task by uh Department of Land Conservation and Development to create a new code. Um it's also been highlighted by the department that they're looking at other cities um for having clear and objective uh development codes in all areas, particularly um those that relate to housing in particular. That's the main area of focus under state law. And so we kind of have that out there to do. It's not necessarily known what the timeline is, but it's something that I guess would go in that category of legal risk of not doing um rather than necessarily a legally mandated timeline in comparison to the first two items on the list. Um similarly with the Americans with Disabilities Act update, there is a previous uh rulemaking, which was called PROAG, and so there's some minor development code updates that need to be done in order to meet that. In some cases, we essentially operate as though the uh state law is directly applicable, but in some cases, that can cause either conflicts or confusion, or it can also cause us to have a situation where we might want a requirement to be implemented, but it can't be because it's not compliant with these laws, and so we lose out. So that's also kind of the legal risk. It's not necessarily a risk of us getting sued, but a risk of us not being able to apply a code provision that we might otherwise want to. Um grading and floodplain kind of fall into that same boat a little bit. Um uh grading is one of those things that previously was regulated under the building codes, um as Suzanne could probably tell you in uh greater detail than I could. Creating was basically taken out of the building codes, and so it's a blind spot right now. It's something that we're not able to regulate until we um add development code provisions. And then the floodplain um is uh kind of in process and changing, and so it's something we know that we're going to have to be able to do. Couple of other legal things that are outstanding is that we need to um get through uh hopefully adoption of the stormwater master plan and then uh corresponding adoption of the Basalt Creek area parks master plan. So those uh plans, in the case of the stormwater, has been presented for council, and so some final work needs to be done um based on some of the conditions, study and survey that was done previously. And then the parks master plan is um accepted by council, but not yet adopted into the comprehensive plan and transportation system plan. And then lastly, it's on the horizon, so it's not for quite some time, but um by the end of twenty twenty-five, we are going to have to have an updated housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory. I know it felt like we just did ours the other day, but um based on the state's cycle, we are going to have to do it again uh sooner rather than later. And then the next slide here, we have, again, based on the placemat, council-identified projects, so uh food cart development code update. Uh trees urban forestry code update, a downtown core area update to complement the urban renewal area. It certainly could be that some of these are combined together, so like the food cart could go along with the downtown core area development code update. Uh the trees and urban forestry could even go along with one of the other things like previously identified, like the grading code or something like that. So that's one of the things that, as you'll see when we talk about building out a work plan that we're continually looking for is like synergies of being able to combine similar projects so that we can deliver things most efficiently and in a way that makes the most sense. Um and then comprehensive plan update was also identified. So this is a pretty extensive list. I I don't know that it necessarily names every single one of them that we've uh been approached about, but there's certainly some of the ones that we've heard strongly or that we've heard repeatedly in some cases. So um coming on the heels of our uh Basalt Creek Employment Code Update, we've heard interest in updating industrial uses in the manufacturing parks. Someone in the council uh asked if that was a possibility when we did the BCE adoption. Um we also have some, I think, probably um I guess inconsistencies in our uh code around and outdoor storage in the industrial areas. If you drive around just thinking about the bus to ruin on this evening, there are certainly lots of examples of uh places where there's outdoor storage. By and large, it's not allowed, it just happens. And I think the thought there is, it probably should be allowed, but it should be regulated in a better way, perhaps through screening or having conditional uses or limiting the amount of it or something, rather than either kind of being like not allowed and then not controlled. Um but that's something that we've heard, particularly from the people who are actually following the letter of the law, that they're frustrated by it when they see other people not. Um commercial office zoning codes, that's that Mohawk Business Park. Um I don't know if you all know this, but like the vacancy rate there is upwards of twenty-five percent, which in the suburbs is crazy high. Um and so we've been approached on a number of occasions by people either interested in buying the park or the area and turning it around, or by the the current owners of changing the zoning code to allow, again, kind of a consistent theme in some of our antiquated zoning code is more flexibility or more m- modern uh allowances in the zoning code there. We've also heard from our community involvement organizations, um some requested development code changes. Some of those have been around how um uh you know, a public comment occurs. Um some of them have been, I think, complimentary to the council's list, like tree code changes. We've also heard just kind of other areas of development code changes. So that is um something that we've heard. Uh we obviously, which in part kind of spurned the genesis of having this specific conversation, was allowing pickleball uses um in the general commercial zone, specific to some properties. I will also note that although we've had, um you know, the council's been made aware of one specific inquiry, we've had this same inquiry on a number of other uh properties in general commercial, and so this isn't the only one. And so this is also gonna kind of lead to a question, a leading question at the end of like, how do we deal with requests for change of uses at a specific property that is also being asked for by a bunch of other properties? What happens there? And then recently, we had brought to the council's attention a request from our, I believe, our existing uh retail cannabis dispensary to change the hours of operation, which are enumerated in the development code. And so that would need to be a development code change. Before we talk specifics, I think it would be helpful just to add a little bit of context. And so when we talk about long-range projects and staff involvement, like what are we talking about? How long do we mean? How much staff is involved in it? What are the kind of components of a typical project? And so we selected a couple of projects. One of them is from before, some of you all are on the council um or right at the beginning of, I think, some of your terms. And then the other one is a more recent one that you're all familiar with. So on this one, this was changes to the mixed-use commercial zoning code. Um a little bit of background, the mixed-use commercial zone is in the Bridgeport Village area of the city. It was a little bit of a hodgepodge of a mix of general commercial and the mixed-use commercial zone. The entire general commercial zone in the Basalt Creek, or excuse me, Salt Creek, in the Bridgeport Village area was planned to become mixed-use commercial, but it essentially was written into the code that it was incumbent on each individual property owner to essentially apply to have that zoning designation applied, which didn't really necessarily make a ton of sense in the overall context of how we would typically see zoning change in terms of if particularly if multiple property owners are eligible to do something and might want to do it, then that makes more sense that it would be what's called a legislative action where the city actually uh takes the initiative to make this change. And so that this was an instance here where that was the case. So just kind of following some basic timelines, starting in September of twenty eighteen, we um developed the project scope in consultation with uh traffic engineer consulting, traffic engineer, and um some of the uh staff that was involved. In October, we did outreach to some of the property owners and stakeholders who were particularly interested in seeing this uh code change happen. And then from November to March of the following year, um we did code transportation planning and outreach work. So we did kind of all of the things at once um amended the draft code. Um had our traffic consultant do transportation planning, and then did public outreach work to all of the property owners that would be affected by this change. Um legally, we weren't required to do that, but we did just in the interest of transparency, and that's something that we tend to do with all of those projects is specifically notice property owners that are affected, even if we're not legally required to do so. Um so the staff involved in that, and then I'm, I'll jump to the conclusion of how we finished out the project. So we had at the time, Akola, our community development director, myself, um Erin at that time was associate planner. She was involved. Um they don't necessarily always get the kudos, but our city JSF uh Tom and Martin helped us out a ton on the mapping part of the process, which is a really uh important and necessary ingredient, both to being able to show people what we're doing, and then ultimately actually achieving the change at the end of the day. The text is one part of it that we work on, but we can't do the mapping without them. And then we had our office coordinator at the time um also do assistance with some of the outreach work, including mailings and things of that nature. Um and then, of course, we hired a outside traffic consultant, DKS, to do traffic work. So once we had done all of the background work, um including the code development and so forth, we went to Planning Commission in April um and city council in June for adoption. I think this was a fairly straightforward and well-supported amendment, so it went pretty quickly. I mean, ten months is a pretty tight timeline. I think that everything fell into place. And so um maybe a little bit atypical, but certainly, I think, an example of how quickly we can do things when all the stars align. So our next project, um which you all are more familiar with, is our recently adopted, thank you, council, the Salt Creek Employment Project. That took about fifteen months. So we started out with council direction of staff in May. July, a public virtual open house, still a little bit on the heels of COVID at that point. Um we met first with Planning Commission in September of that year. Um we heard a lot from our stakeholders at that point, um and there was at that point in the project, certainly uh some I think, distance between what our stakeholders wanted to see in our original direction that we'd received from council, as well as our direction from Planning Commission. And so we spent quite a lot of time over that period, basically trying to uh work with our consultant to research a way that we could find a meeting in the middle. As you can see here, we did lots of Planning Commission meetings where we listened to stakeholders and other folks that are involved, presented various iterations of the project and the code. Um we were able to squeeze in there a meeting Um, we were able to squeeze in their a meeting with architectural review board where we got some good feedback on the. Design criteria that we ultimately presented to council for adoption. And then in August of this year, we had city council adoption. Um, again, one meeting. So that was again added to the. Time efficiency, even though it was a little bit longer for process than the previous example. And so again, here um we the staff that was primarily involved was assistant community development director, me, Aaron, the senior planner now. Still our G G I S team, um our office coordinator. We had a planning consultant as well as an economic and traffic sub consultant. And I think it's also worth mentioning, although you know, this is the staff on the ground kind of doing the changes. We also had um, you know, great. Feedback and involvement and workshopping for some of these concepts with our city manager, Cheryl and with our community development director, Kim. So I'd be remiss if I. Didn't mention them. So we're gonna go a little bit into um to talk about uh some draft work plan considerations. I think when we think about projects that feed into that draft work plan. Um, we're talking about, of course, our ongoing planning projects. And so obviously, we wanna ask the question, are we headed in the right direction? Um, particularly as I mentioned, things like the housing production strategy implementation, there's some flexibility on. How heavily we expend our resources on implementing. And so we wanna make sure that we're um. Doing the right thing by the council when we're going ahead and doing that. Um, on our legally required and previously identified projects, we wanna make sure that we're doing them efficiently, as I mentioned. And so um, you know, some strategies we use there to ensure efficiency as we use model codes wherever we can. Um, we use consultants, many of whom are doing these type of projects for multiple jurisdictions. And so they have a handle on how to comply with state law. Um, that helps to reduce the scope of work. Um, where we've been able to, we've certainly delayed implementation to better spread out our workload so that. C F A parking code that I mentioned was an example of one where we would have had to implement it last year, but we've deferred it to this year to free up some time. Um, under the council identified potential projects, you know, the obvious question is how should staff prioritize? Um, and so some example ways that um this could be tackled would be to create a. Scoring rubric based on factors such as the alignment with overall council goals, um approximate staff time and consultant cost. And project duration. So um, there's not necessarily one right way, right way to do this, but I think that. Um, you know, figuring out like helping staff figure out what should we lead with and how should we. Meet out these projects. I think understanding that the goal is ultimately to be able to satisfy all these council priorities, but we wanna do it. In a way that we feel like is the biggest bang for the buck on both ends, both in terms of the efficiency and then also from meeting council goals. And then I guess another kind of question, which there will be some more questions. We don't necessarily need to answer all of these right now, but I think these are just. Intended to be food for thought questions is for the other projects like those that are identified by community or developers is. What is the process to add some of this work to the work plan? And so, you know, example would be to. Collect those requests as as they come and then present them to council. Um, and say, this is what we received. You know, what of these do you want to put on your placemat or put into your bucket of council? Priorities? Or, you know, do we have some other way? Do we kind of reserve a slot for like one project a year that's a community project in a work plan or? You know, just a couple of ideas, but we can talk a little more about what that might look like. Another consideration, which is probably the elephant in the room a little bit is staffing. Um, so we've shown here how do other cities prioritize their planning projects. And so um, you know, in talking with our colleagues. From other jurisdictions, we found that varies from, you know, a very formal adopted work plan. I think. Clackamas County, where I worked previously as an example of like a plan that goes to their board of county commissioners and actually gets adopted every. So often, um, I think biannually right now. Um, whereas some staffs like Sherwood's um and even Tiger's is pretty like informal. It's not, it's just like a running tally that they have going. The other thing too, that you'll see here from this slide is that um. The number of staff and what that staff does kind of varies city by city as well. And you really kind of have two types of of planning staffs. You have the smaller staffs which kind of do it all. They do everything from current planning to long range planning to any other types of planning that they might have to do. Um, obviously Newburgh, although it's close in size and overall things, it's outside of the um. Portland metropolitan U G B. So it's a little bit different as far as their needs and demands um. And so what you'll see is you have planning staffs essentially our size, about four-ish people. And then you have, you know, Wilsonville, which is kind of an in between. It's the same size as us, population size and square miles roughly, but they basically have. A larger planning staff and they have a dedicated long range planning team with its own set of management. And staff that primarily focuses on working on long range planning work. And then, of course, you have Tigard and Lake Oswego that have, I mean, very, I would call them pretty large. Um, very well developed staffs that again have a similar long range and current planning. And then at some of these larger jurisdictions like a Tiger and a Lake Oswego, you'll even find that they have uh housing specific. Planning staff and uh sustainability or something similar type of staff person for. Implementation of climate action goals. Um, and so that's something also to note there. So we put together, just in the interest of having this conversation this evening, uh very draft work plan. Very much a work in process, but I think it hopefully gives you some kind of semblance or sense of what we're looking at. Doing in developing a work plan for council priorities. So we've again chunked it into. Uh, the categories that we mentioned, ongoing legally required. I think we made tweaks on the. Ladder two categories we've um said kind of technically the stormwater and Basalt Creek are legally required in that we have to have them. But they're really plans where we've essentially gotten really close to finishing them, but we just haven't gotten over the finish line. And so they're a little bit different than projects. That haven't been started. And then we have given space for a couple of new projects. And so the intention here is not necessarily to. M- make any prioritization or to say one type of project is better than the others, but more so just to show how we think this could work with our current level of staffing. Um, and some conversation about prioritization. So as you see on the top, you have the ones that we mentioned that are ongoing, the housing production strategy, T S P update and climate action plan. And what we're showing with the various colors, green, yellow and red is green is all. Pro- projected light level of staff involvement, yellow is moderate and red is fairly intense. And so, for example, with the housing production strategy, which is the top uh listed. Item on the work plan. Um, you know, right now we're in a little bit of uh. A holding pattern with that where we've done recently, the um equitable strategic financial plan. And we just have finished adoption of that. And so we don't have a major item on the radar right now. Um, however. We're going to ultimately have a midpoint report due, which is legally required at the midpoint in. The second quarter of basically late at the end of this calendar year. And so we're gonna have to ramp up our effort on looking at basically auditing what we've done and then organizing it and then. A high level of work to actually complete that report um and then work with the state to figure out. On the backside of that, what our next steps are going forward for the plan, because we may have to adjust. Or alter the plan based on their feedback to that work that we've completed. And then we're scoping minimal involvement into the future, mainly just because we can't necessarily predict it. And we haven't had this conversation with you as a council. Of how much work do you want us to do? So that's why, that's kind of a a snapshot of those um examples. The transportation system plan taking as another example. So we're doing a pretty moderate level of work right now. Um, long range planning isn't too involved. I'm a member of the project management team, so my time is pretty involved at this point. Um, but then, once we get to the end of the project where we're doing adoption and a pretty heavy public outreach component of that. Um, we will be spending a lot of time. And then the climate action plan, um, we're spending kind of a moderate amount of time right now. And again, the we're showing green into the future because it's a little bit T B. D about how much uh the council wants us to prioritize implementation of the actions identified in that plan. And so you see kind of a similar like uh flow for, I guess, what I would call kind of pure planning projects like a development code update. Let's just take the first one, the grading flood pain regulations where we see, um, you know, or identifying for a project like that, we'd probably have a consultant. Um, to help us create a draft code. And so we would be doing some light work as far as scoping. And working with them to make sure that the code fits our local needs. But then usually when we work with a consultant, we take over the adoption piece of it, because that's the part that we're um. Just a well-oiled machine and it doesn't make sense to have them do that. And so it does require more work for us. So that's kind of what those represent. In those. And then the other, I guess, note is that the A is intended to um. Identify adoption of a document where that's needed, um, which is for most of them. The arrow indicates that the action is scheduled to go longer, like the housing production strategy is a long term plan. The climate action plan has actions that are strategies that are identified as far as I think ten years out um. And then uh, for example, in the middle category, the C F A land use code, we're saying. An L for legally required and an adoption as well. So. Um, those are just some examples. And so what we've tried to do is we've tried to kind of spread them out to out. Uh, in a way that allows us to manage and kind of juggle all these projects at once. And so. It's hard to like commit to it because we just did this as a very draft exercise, but this is intended to represent like. What we believe is a sustainable level of effort within three years of like, this is how many projects we could do. So like. Maybe taking on a couple of new projects and particularly, as I mentioned, the tree code, we're kind of pairing it. Like potentially pairing that with the grading flood plane and ADA um. Uh, code update to have some synergy there when we talk to the public that we're talking about, or not just kind of scatter shot. Talking to them at different times about whole different projects that we're actually like, talking to them, the cohesive voice of, you know, here are some things that are. Um, you know, somewhat interrelated together um. You know, grading and tree removal for our purposes are particularly um intertwined, as is flood plain. Um, ADA maybe less so, but it's um, again, that synergy piece. So as we talk about the actual work plan considerations, um additional things to think about. Is how many years should it look forward? So we have some different examples. I mean, should we just do this a year at a time where we come back every year and? Uh, come up with a new year in advance, two years, five years. Again, this kind of same question perhaps phrased or framed a different way. How do we prioritize? Um, legal requirements are obviously important. Um, we in general have internally tried to prioritize grant eligible projects. Um, obviously, alignment with council goals is woven throughout all of the work that we undertake. Community priority is also important to us. Um, we have other factors like equity, overall costs. Um, even if we get a grant, oftentimes we're required to bring money to the table. So. It depends on the project, but that could still be a significant outlay on our part. Um, you know, our ability to implement, so obviously we showed you examples of, you know, uh, two different development code updates. One was easy to implement, one was a little bit harder to implement. And so that is certainly a factor when we scope out how much work we can get done. And then, you know, project duration, obviously, things that have long projected time horizons. Are, you know, uh, going to require more upfront investment, but then also potentially bear more fruit in the end. So that's. A consideration, not to say that any of these are, I mean, I think council, in my opinion, council goals has the. Alignment of council goals has the number one priority, but then how do we like go after that is an open question. And then, you know, if we do plan out for two, three, four years at a time, how often should we update it? Should we? You know, be tweaking it frequently? Should we come back every year or, you know, more like a two year cadence like Clackamas County? Where they kind of decide on the two years and then they don't come back until two years later. And then I think the last and probably, you know, not uh. Last, but certainly not least question is, how do we account for needs that are not in the work plan? And this is a frequent thing that you and council. Are faced with is, you know, somebody comes up with something that you hadn't planned on addressing. That wasn't a council priority and wasn't on the placemat, but is still important and is a community need. And so what do we do? You know, do we, if we're on a two year cadence, do we wait until the next prioritization? Or do we have some sort of like override process where we might, you know, put a project that was already identified on hold? And reprioritize, you know, is there something formal or not? Again, a food for a thought question. And so then kind of diving into um that last question a little bit more. Uh, and using our community request example, so the request to have pickleball at a specific property within the general commercial zone. Um, so we have a couple of different pathways towards uh achieving this outcome. The first. Um, would be a legislative amendment to permit the use outright in the general commercial zone. Um, kind of not dissimilar with the example projects that we showcased for you in the previous slides or would require. Us to hire a consultant and do traffic analysis. We'd have to do um. Public and property owner outreach and scoping and so forth. And, you know, it would be a project's worth of our time on that work plan. There's also kind of the sub option, which is stated as option two, but more more like one A and one B. Is that there's a legislative amendment to allow the use, but required to be a conditional use. Um, the advantage of. That over outright is although it does require similar process as far as consultant led traffic analysis. Um, but the thing that it does is it minimizes the staff time needed to survey the entire general commercial zone to figure out whether or not. This is a good use on all the properties, which is admittedly kind of daunting. Um, and it helps to ensure that specific site locations are appropriate for pickleball use. And I think there's probably even some like sub refinements. That we could say there where it's like, you know, indoors permitted outright and maybe it's an outdoor that's conditional and. Um, you know, that's certainly an option because there are general commercial zoned properties that are, you know, potentially abutting. Uh, other incompatible uses or residential properties or so forth. And so, you know, in al-. In allowing use outright across all zoned property in a in the city, that's one of the things that we're also. Undertaking is like making sure that we mitigate for any impacts that could be happen from that changed use. And then kind of an alternate pathway, um, which does raise some some other questions is um that. If it's limited to a specific property or properties, it could be a quasi judicial amendment. Uh, to permit the use on the specific property. And so that would typically be the applicant or property owner would lead that process. And so. It kind of takes it off of our work plan. Um, it puts it on to our current planning, but it's maybe a little bit less work there and certainly not as much. Kind of pressure on us to go through and hire um a traffic consultant and do the scoping and, you know. The public outreach is the burden, you know, we still do property notice, but the burden is on them to deal with. Uh, the complaints from the public and so forth. Um, so overall, I think it requires less staff time legislative, not necessarily. Ton less, but certainly some less. Um, the one glaring spot, which is, I think, true of. These and other requests is that it does not address the previously identified desire to have it on other. G C zone properties. And so I think that's something for council to kind of think about from a policy level is, you know, if. There's a bunch of people going around wanting a use scatter shot, you know, is it better to figure out where it fits on the work plan? It's hard because it doesn't necessarily like allow for the timeline that this. It's hard because it doesn't necessarily like allow for the timeline that this person wants, but it does, you know, kind of prevent having scattershot application and right pinging around. So some things to think about when we think about how to funnel and respond to community requests. Not all of them will fit this way. Some of them just naturally will be legislated by their nature. But some might be able to go down this pathway. And so questions for council. You know, is somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three years, the right length for a work plan? Should it be longer? Obviously, we've identified some projects that go well beyond that timeline. Some pros of a longer work plan are that a longer work plan to be able to account for those longer lifestyle lifecycle projects. It would allow us to kind of, I think, map out and figure out where hopefully each and every council priority project fits and not just kind of say, you know, deferred or later on a couple of projects or maybe more than a couple of projects. I think also some of the pros are that it may be able to better provide the ability to forecast staff and budgetary needs. And so obviously, like, you know, every year when we with our wonderful finance director, Dawn's assistants, put together our department budget, we do a request that includes consultant services and we usually keep that pretty fixed year to year in line with budgetary needs, but obviously, you know, for projects like the transportation system plan where we needed to have an exceptional amount of consultant involvement compared to our typical needs. And we had to like actually plan for that and budget for it separately. And so those are good things to know when we have that situation, I guess, the one, I think, you know, con that I might add of the longer work plan is that it has the potential to like get too inflexible that if it's too far out that like it feels like, oh, we've kind of built everything. It's like Jenga, we've stacked it all on top of each other. And how do we pull out a piece without the tower falling over? So I think that, you know, it probably shouldn't be too too long. So what's what's the right length? And then, you know, if we do say that two to three years roughly is the right length, give or take, you know, what do we do with those longer projects that we see them as not being able to be completed? You know, do we just have like a, I guess I would call it a parking lot or a future projects area where we know it's a priority and we know that we want it to come on to one of these future two to three year work plans, but we know that it's not going to be able to be addressed within the particular one that we're looking at. And then last question, again, just kind of reiterating some of these, maybe putting them a different way each time to help you all process your thoughts is, you know, where do these community requested projects fit? And so, you know, with example, being like the CIO requested changes to the development code where it's like a community wide and it's not intended necessarily to just be to one or a couple of properties. Is that a situation where we would, you know, set up some kind of process to have like a council acceptance of that project? And then that would maybe go on the placemat or go on the work plan under this future projects area or, you know, fit in if we could fit it in. And then, you know, as a general rule, should properties, specific projects, even if the council, you know, thinks that they're a project worthy of endorsement, you know, should they be the applicant's responsibility? Or should we like? If the council thinks it's a good thing, should we try to figure out, you know, are there other areas in the city where this use could work? So like example might be that if we said, well, someone says that they want to do food carts on this property, would we want to just say, okay, that's your burden to do? Or would we want to like say, well, wait a second, we might, you know, want this to be allowed multiple places. So we're going to kind of take this on like we're taking this not as a request, but as feedback that this is a project. So there may not be the same answer for every every single project. There may not be a one size fits all kind of a like you go down this slot or this slot depending on what you want. So I guess with that, I've asked a lot of questions. I think that, you know, if there is feedback tonight on particularly these final questions, I'd love to receive it. I think that ultimately my intention would be to return with a more fully fleshed out work plan and maybe some more options. Depending on the feedback that I get tonight. And if, you know, you don't feel ready for feedback, then I'll try to have our staff map out some more work plan options kind of based on what I think potential answers to these questions might be. And so that's the conclusion of my formal presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions or receive feedback or, you know, critiques on our picture, whatever.
All right. I'm gonna say questions slash comments from counselors on the slide we have here. Counselor Sacco.
So I just initial thoughts. I feel like a longer plan is necessary. We have a lot of projects out there and a lot of longer projects. But also have access to reprioritize. I don't know if that's annually or every two years. I think on one slide biannually was offered up and that feels a little too short. But annually or every two years seems appropriate as things pop up. And also the ability to plug in new projects where needed, if there's a a big need. I mean, we have things come up like COVID or whatever the case may be, these really big things that we have to make sure that we're hopefully nothing as big as that pops up. But I just think we have to be willing to reprioritize as as things change over the years. This isn't on the slide, but I I like the idea of the scoring rubric. We use that when I was on the parks advisory committee to prioritize projects for the parks. It wasn't easy, but it seemed like this daunting task. And that was something that really just helped us on the committee, look at everything and take things like, I mean, something might be really a high priority with the legal requirements, but there might be also this smaller project that's pretty quick to implement that you can like low hanging fruit to to cross off the list. So I think it helps sort of put the Jenga pieces together. With that rubric was really helpful. That's all I have right now.
Others? Counselor Consol.
Yes. So I have a couple of questions. Along your presentation, there's consultants being used throughout throughout your presentation. Consultants cost more money than hired FTE. Would you agree?
I don't know. I mean, cost more money. I think that I would for a staff of our size, I would probably say that consultants is a more fiscally prudent way to approach projects. I think particularly because that you're able to hire specialized expertise at a level like, so you could hire like, say, we have a city engineer, but we don't have like a senior traffic engineer, somebody that actually creates traffic studies or is able to review traffic studies. And so for us to have an FTE at that level, we'd have to pay them a lot, but we don't actually have an FTE's worth of work in a calendar year. And so it's more efficient to have a consultant where you can basically have specialized talent and call on them where possible, like example, our Basalt Creek employment, like we had an economist, we couldn't, I mean, could you imagine having an economist on city staff? But we were able to tap into that expertise and have that as part of our plan.
Some of the positions that are currently open now in Tuolatin, would those be included in this list if hired? Like you have four people currently that are supporting the plan. These hiring, these positions are are filled, would they go on this number?
I'm sorry, can you?
So we are, there's probably four positions that you're at Tuolatin is hired for on engineers and would those be added if hired to your list of four that you listed here?
So I guess what I'm listing for the four is our existing staff. So that's existing planning staff. We don't have any open heads in planning currently. And so we do, I mean, sometimes have overlap where some of the projects that involve multiple disciplines, we're able to get support like GIS is a good example. But for the most part, I mean, that's where we're seeking efficiency is we're taking a situation where we, you know, don't necessarily have demand for an FTE. I think at a larger level in the long term, and this isn't necessarily a work plan question, is that, I mean, you know, and I don't don't know necessarily whether or not we could identify a, and of course, when you're adding FTE, you have to identify a consistent source of ongoing funding. And that's one of the advantages also using consultants is that if we don't have that source of funding in a year, instead of laying off ahead or, you know, not having a head, we we don't do it, we defer a project. And so that's another advantage. But I guess that's kind of a bigger conversation of whether or not we in the long term, expand our staff. Or, I mean, that's kind of an overriding question, right? Is do we expand the staff or do we live within our means and adjust our project expectations to the fact that we have this kind of fixed staff relative to our our, you know, historical budget and that we have a varying need of other planning projects, you know, the current planning, for example, that that takes our time and that like we have to build in some amount of either the release valve through consultant services and or just planning prudently and carefully when we do our work plan that we're not over committing.
When you called the city to inquire how many people they have on staff with this presentation, did you get a sense of the similar projects that you guys are managing right now? Like, for example, Newburgh, they have four people, right? Did you get an estimate of roughly what they're managing as much as you we are here versus what they are?
You know, it was it's hard to get apples and oranges, particularly because I would say that Newburgh and Sherwood are are probably our closest analogues as far as the number of staff. But they had, I would say, the least formalized work plans and nothing of the type to kind of like the Gantt chart that shows how many projects they're doing at a certain time. It was more just like, this is what we're doing with like Sherwood, for example, they're doing a lot of effort on their their Sherwood West concept plan right now, and they're throwing all their staff at it, quite frankly. So that's one project that they're probably throwing, you know, that they have staff involvement with that far exceeds our staff involvement with any project. And so it's hard to like really do apples to apples comparison. I think that, I mean, for our staff size, I feel pretty good about the amount of stuff that we're able to push through.
So I divided up the number, it's just playing with the numbers here. So to Tuolatin with the four staff, you're based on our population, you're almost sixty eight hundred eighty-four people per staff, just in case all of apply for. So we're pretty high. I mean, there's a lot of support for our four people in comparison to what other cities. And so you know, you're doing a lot with four people. It's very obvious. I guess that's a little question I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Hilliard and Counsel Reyes.
Thank you. Steve, thank you for this presentation. You've put a lot of work into this and a lot of thought and asked us some really good questions. And I thank you and your staff for the time that you've taken. And I also want to publicly thank you. I know that we were working hard for this, a little tangential, but not completely. Trying to get a Eagle Scout project going to help us and your staff bent over backwards immediately to answer questions. And I tried not to call and say who I was. However, your staff was extremely and and continued to support the family, even as unfortunately they couldn't work with ours. So I I do want to say how professional, I want to make sure it's on public record to acknowledge how professional and amazing your staff is. And I also believe that we need to look at a two or three year sort of block of time. I know for some reason my my brain works in bienniums and so, because a lot of my funding comes in that way. And so I think I think in that way and and being able to, and I think that's also kind of when we do our council retreats is about every two years. And so that kind of in my mind makes a little bit of sense or some sense. I also really like the rubric and actually for more than just community identified projects. And the reason I say that is I I believe that we need to really take into account certainly the legal aspect of things. That seems very important to me. To be sure that our city is always in a position that we're ahead of those things so that we're not getting caught off guard. And then all of a sudden, everybody's department's in a fire drill. And so I really appreciate that and think those should be prioritized and or weighted in a different way in a rubric. But I also think that we need to understand what are the costs potentially in a rubric that would be weighted higher. And also, how many community members is this going to impact? I mean, if we're looking at something that's going to impact seventy-two community members, not that those seventy-two community members are not incredibly important. However, if it takes the same amount of work that we can do and and implement something that affects seventy-two hundred, I I think that there should be some sort of weighting on that. And and to me, that then is looking at the bigger projects. And I also wonder, I I don't know in in all the planning and and how your department works or any of exactly, but in my world, a lot of times things happen, we we implement a program or we do whatever. And as we're evaluating it, we have intended and unintended outcomes and we have to adjust. And so I would imagine that in in running a city this size, that those sorts of things also happen. And so I would be worried not to be able to make sure that you understand the fallout of bigger projects positively and negatively before we start taking on, you know, smaller ones that aren't, of course, you know, a COVID sort of thing that starts small and gets ginormous or, you know, that sort of thing. So I guess currently those are, those are my sorts of my thoughts.
I say thank you for your presentation, very thoughtful and detailed. But I know it's, there's more than that on your part. And this is just a shorter version for us. Based on your questions that you presented to us on to consider. I also feel like a two, three year look at things at three, three projects at two to three years is a better way of processing things for me as well. I I know a lot of things can happen within two years, three years. So inflation prices go up and, you know, that's things that we did two years ago is definitely not the same as now. So I do like that idea based on your question. Is two to three years right length for work plan or should it be longer? I think I think longer would be just too much. I will probably forget about it and and then you would not remember. So two to three years is good. And I will start with prioritizing, like you said here. In those two to three years, the the low hanging fruit that that cancer Sacco mentioned, maybe, you know, the pickleball thing. I don't know what a low, low hanging fruit, but whatever project you feel that I trust that when you present to us a project that it needs immediate attention. Those are like projects that you need from us and you don't want us to, you don't want to wait long and things, you know, fall off or you lose an opportunity. So I don't want to, I don't want to put you in that position, you and your staff. So for me, any any project that you present to us that is a priority for your staff, your team going through league, you meet with the manager, city manager and the city attorneys. I trust that you do all that before you come to us. So I would trust that those are the projects that are important for us to review and decide on by the way. So that's, that's kind of where I feel. And and this, this is not part of your question, but your question's there, but I I I I understand why you use consultants and I I think that it's, it's a very for us, it works for the city of Tuolatin. But I think you have like four hundred and something phone calls or let me just go back. And this, like I said, it's not part of your question, but I just kind of alarm me and I'm like, oh, my gosh, poor people answering all these calls and emails. If ever there's some funds, I would, I would suggest a support staff, somebody that can help you you, you know, go through these emails and prioritize the emails. So I mean, that's, that's what I feel like a lot of help is needed. But like I said, I'm not, I'm just, I was just amazed how many, how many in this just quarter four of twenty twenty-three just balloon and four people. It's, it's a lot. It's a lot of reading and Of twenty twenty-three, just balloon, um, and four people. It's, it's a lot. It's a lot of reading and. Carefully replying to all these individuals. Um, so that's just, um. Just, just on the questions that you have up there. I mean, I'm sure there, there are more things, um, there are longer projects that would take longer and. I mean, we'll get there when, when we get there. I mean, um, but I feel like whatever is a low hanging fruit and whatever you need now. That's what I want to help you and support you with. A lot of community projects that are requested from our community. Um, they're important as well, but definitely, um. I will echo what councillor, uh, Hiller said with the legal. Stuff too, that's very important. We don't want to get ourselves in trouble and put your, the city and everybody in a position of. You know, where we are not doing what we need to do legally. Um, yeah, so that's basically what I think on, on your questions there. So.
Thank you.
I, I did the same thing as councillor Gonzalez. I divided the, off your chart, I divided it by. Um, po- population and by land size. And both cases we come up like, we probably could use one more FTE if you just based it on that. Which I think that, that points out the deep need for the consultants to help in the specific areas. So if, so when it comes to like, um. I guess the head person that's responsible for both long-term and short-term projects, that ends up on you then, right?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's kind of the, I guess, maybe the point that I was trying to make and the comparison is, is that like it really. Staff stays small until jurisdiction makes a decision basically to have a dedicated long-range planning staff. And so our staff, I think, is a great size for what we have. I think it's ultimately in the longer term and maybe not even here at this meeting or even within the context of developing our work plan. Is just an overall question from the community's perspective of like, is there enough community to desire to try to figure out a way to. Have a separate long-range planning staff with a long-range planning manager and people who specialize in that as opposed to. Is at some point, just taking on more staff with one supervisor is just like. It becomes like untenable for like the oversight of people. And that's where the consultants actually like where you can kind of staff up to a higher level. Like is more of a release valve than hiring FTEs.
Right. I guess that, well, I'm just going to bring out my point here, but. That's to me, like on the council goals, um, I, I'm gonna just. Push my agenda here, but I don't, I don't see how we do underlying things if we don't have a, a, a. In-depth comprehensive plan to drive that. It's like if in a, you're in a business, you come up with your strategic plan. And then you set your goals underneath that. So to me, it's so important for. And then that keeps us, you know, for updating the development code, we're looking at what that says. It's kind of like our council goals, right? We're, we're always looking to them. So I'm just pushing my agenda here. But I, I really think that's important. And I know you guys have very limited time and that's a huge project, but I'm going to say it anyway. So, um, as far as the, um, length of a work plan, um, I kind of think. The five year is fine, just because you can, you can have things that maybe you're going to have out there, but. They're sitting there, so you know they're upcoming. And I would say, um, yeah, just like Kristen said, um, the Parks Department does where. They prioritize everything annually, so you can move things around as needed. You know, because things change and we've really learned that the last few years, that unexpected things happen. And on the, um, you have something in one of your earlier slides, but I think there should be like, uh. Like you have your plans and all this, but then there should be some kind of little out, but it'd be an exception to the rule where if some, I don't know, something just came up. That was so unexpected, maybe it was really an essential thing with. That we, we just didn't expect and it's, it's really important for maybe the safety of our community or whatever that you could have a. You know, it wouldn't be the normal, like if someone came for pickleball or whatever, that it wouldn't be something of that sort, but something. That really needed to be a priority in the community that you could switch your staff around and push that forward if needed.
And maybe just to, to push you a little bit on that and ask a question if I may, um. Is that something where you'd envision us like essentially like bringing back the work plan and having like, of course, kind of like an emergency revision?
Yeah, I guess it'd be a thing like where you'd probably come to council and say, hey, we, we think this might be. Like something could have happened during COVID that would have made a big difference.
Yeah, that's a great example. Okay. No, thank you.
Might I add also that potentially, um, maybe there's a grant all of a sudden that, that becomes open. And, and you realize it could, it's in that five-year plan or the three-year, whatever it is we decide on, that you're like, wow, we could do. Do something even with or without matching or, you know, however that looks. Thank you. Great idea, councillor.
Yeah, I, uh, yeah, um, I, I agree with the flexibility of coming up with something like, for instance. Um, something, um, fell and crack broke and it's a safety issue to, I don't know, some. Safety to our public. Come to our health, uh, public health, and now we need to switch things around and move things around. Yeah, definitely with that flexibility, uh, of. Um, analyzing things and then pri- reprioritizing. So I, I'm with that on. I agree with.
Els Tzakko.
My, my second set of notes, sorry. Um, so, um, talking about. Um, employees and headcount, um, so have we done sort of a, like a value assessment on what could be done with another? Headcount and what, like what investment would that have to our, our community? So like, how much would it cost? What investment would it bring, um, to have that, that extra person, um? Do, my, my next question is, do we have any positions that haven't been backfilled? And I mean, I haven't been around long enough to know that. I know that like in, in, um, my, in my career. Uh, you know, we've done more with less over the last few years. And I'm just wondering if that's at all a, an issue. A couple more notes and then you can answer, um. Uh, I would be interested in learning more about a long-term planner, having someone that does focus on the longer vision. Um, and I don't know if that's the extra headcount, um, person or not, uh, to consider. But, um, you know, one thing that was brought up during the core area, uh, area, urban renewal. Uh, conversation is like, what is the vision for Tuolumne? What's the identity of Tuolumne? And that's really hard to do, I think, without seeing that farther vision. And making sure then that all the, the little pieces that are falling into place throughout, you know. Two to three-year planning process that we, we, we're consistent in that vision and knowing what's coming farther down the road. Um, and then speaking of core area, I don't know if that falls into any of this, but, um, I was on that planning committee. So I, I've already done a lot of work there. And so, um, I'm also really interested in, you know, what, what. Where does that fall into the prioritization? And, um. I think we ha- um, had somebody that was focused on that, um, and then they're no longer here. So really interested to in like, what is, how is that going to be prioritized and staffed? Um, and then my last note, which two people had already said, so I just want to underline that funding is a huge factor in prioritization. Um, so if we had any grants, um, or funding that became available, even if it wasn't a huge priority. That if we're able to get it done with funding that, you know, from elsewhere, that I would love to see those come up as we take advantage of those funds.
Sorry, what? I thought we were still.
Yep.
Talking about this. See, yeah, so I actually was, you answered on page seventeen, you have, um, the. Um, kind of examples or comparison of different cities. And I, it, I'm curious, you say Newburgh is focused on just one, or no, Sherwood's focused on just one thing. And they have, um, three people, there are a lot, uh, seven thousand less in population than, uh, seventy-five hundred less. But West Lynn actually looks very, very close to us in population and square miles and planning stuff. What are, what are they're doing, uh, that, um, are they're the same? Are they're like?
Nope.
Yeah, they're, I know they're, we're not the same, but I know they're, they have a lot of development going on there and they're. So, um, are they also focusing on one project? And that's why they, it can function.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm wondering.
It's hard, hard to say about Westland. I mean, they don't have, like, they don't have an identified, like, code project that they're doing. Right now, it's the best of my knowledge. I know that they were doing some, they've kind of been in and out of like riverfront planning. But that's like very up and down as far as staff involvement and staff need there. I mean, it's a little bit different. And I guess this kind of goes to like the, you know, Sherwood piece is like Sherwood's been doing economic development work. Which is planning adjacent. And so they have a economic development professional Bruce. Um, but it's not like planning code work necessarily. And so the like actual planning work. That, that they're getting, that they're, that they're doing is, is the Sherwood West Concept Plan primarily, um. And I guess that actually goes to, if I may answer your question, uh, councillor Saco, like the core area. So although we don't have our economic development manager, essentially where it was left with the creation of the district was the next step was. Basically a planning project, the urban renewal piece, the economic development piece is done. And so it's kind of delivered. Congruent with Jonathan's leaving into our laps to kind of like the ball's in our court now to deal with. And so that's part of like where we're having this conversation is we have a lot of big meaty things that have been identified. On this placemat that we're trying to figure out. I mean, and we have, I think a lot of the, heard a lot of great. Thoughts from you, um, as far as like, where do we go next? And I mean, certainly things where we have grant opportunities or other synergies or, you know, kind of informally and internally where we've. Placed our efforts before, but I think we're just at a point where we're feeling like this is a big enough conversation that we want to. Have a gut check with you to make sure, A, we're headed in the right direction and B, that you're feeling like your priorities are getting addressed. In a, like orderly, and so I keep hearing the rubric is something that is valuable. And so making sure that we're dealing with it in, in an orderly way. And I guess just to lastly, kind of stick a pin on the like staffing conversation is that. In what I'm, what, in talking to my colleagues in the region is that like, there's really kind of two programs. There's a smaller program or there's a program with a long-range planning department, like an actual supervisor. And because adding more staff to do it just means like ultimately it needs some level of oversight where. And they get new staff and they're great and they are high energy and like the, there's tons of phone calls to answer. But as far as like actually having experience with projects and ability to. Like need oversight and involvement, you know, I'm the one that's solely responsible for that. And so consultants has been a, have been a god, godsend. Like we've gotten great, uh, you know, involvement from them. But as far as adding heads. We were, were relatively where we have been for essentially like our, you know, where the planning program has been for quite some time. And so that's, I mean, I think it's a, I think we're in a good place. I think it just ultimately in the long term, this isn't necessarily a like. You know, hidden request for more staff or anything. I think it's just a, a question of like in the next five years. Does Tuolumne enter a phase in which they want to become one of those cities with a long-range planning department? As part of their planning department, separate from the other. I mean, I think that relatively speaking, we have. What I'm hearing is some good direction to come back with some more, with a more fleshed out plan. And using our current level of staffing and our current kind of expected level of budgeting for consultants to be able to. Start to move forward on them. Some of these are asterisks, like the urban renewal plan, which is obviously starting to collect increment. Has money dedicated and devoted to that downtown urban renewal planning. And so that's one of the things that's great. And that's why probably in an actual rubric, we would score it higher once we actually have that money. I don't, I haven't looked at the budget recently, but like, once you actually have that money that we budgeted for, it was like four hundred thousand dollars secured. Then that's something that we would want to bring to council's attention and, you know, potentially be starting that program and, and process very soon. Conversely, if we're still thinking about the rubric, it's one of those ones of like ease to implement. I would also say conversely is very low. I mean, in previous attempts at urban real planning, that's been one of the most challenging topics that the city has, um. Ventured in the past and many of the property owners in the area are the same as they were last time that conversation happened. And so. I mean, again, I think like this is wonderful feedback from all of you and it feels like a good basis on which to kind of come back. With a more fleshed out work plan. And then as a side comment, councillor Pratt, I think that we want to have a separate conversation to hopefully. Have a more in-depth conversation about the comp plan and the development code and how those two pieces fit together. And where we see like the most efficient pathway forward and achieving the goals that we want to have happen.
My turn? All right. I agree with most of what's been said already. I'm more towards a two to three-year plan versus five. Because elections are every two years and one drastic council election will change the agenda for the council going forward. Uh, so if you have a five-year plan, it might get totally ditched by a new council. So a two or three years is fine with me with an annual review. Again, if there's an emergency, of course, we'll look at it. I think the rubric's a great idea because I want a objective. Uh, measurement of projects versus an emotional one or because people are screaming at us. Um, I was mentioning to Rachel about the scoring process for community development block grant. Projects are all done on a scoring system that makes all projects equal. And the score is the score and, uh, that's how they rate the projects. Uh, I like the idea of the future slash parking lots idea, as was stated before. You leave them there because it, again, if dollars appear or a project gets done early, you squeeze it in. If possible, going back to your code reviews and the one-offs, I'd rather do strategic zoning versus one-offs. Um, you know, particular pick on the pickleball one, you know, I'd rather look at all the general commercial zone at one time. And not look at this at fourteen different times or every time an applicant comes in. If we see there's a mass or a, uh, you know, several people asking and that same kind of particular kind of thing. I'd rather take it on one swap, new swap and doing these onesie twos, these things, because I think it's better vision for the city. It's more strategic. Um, again, I, I like the idea of combining good projects, although I have a feeling that the folks about grading and paving will be pretty quiet. But when it comes to tree ordinances, that gets pretty emotional. But we, you know, like you said, those do combine well. Uh, and getting into the staffing, I look at Leica Swigel and Wilsonville. Uh, I don't know what the right word for this, but they're a more aggressive and progressive development city. They are very active in long-term planning and that's why they have the staff. Um, and to some of the comments today, if you're going to do a long-term department, it's not one person. It's usually a, a senior planner, a junior planner and an assistant. Um, so you're looking at probably three people, not one, if you're going to do this right. So again, that's a separate conversation about, um, budgeting and into the future. But if you want to do it right, it's, you're looking at three people minimum. That do focus kind of like an LO and Wilsonville on that long-range plan. And then the four folks over here are managing a day-to-day short range. Uh, but again, yeah, that's, those are my comments. I think you're going in the right direction. I think generally we have pretty much consensus or anything that we differ on is the timeline. Is it three to, you know, two, three years or five years? So other than that, I think we're in sync.
With your comment about elections, I, I think I'm back on track with you.
Now, because you can, you can see in different cities, they do one eighties every two years. So, and then you're coming about West Lynn, not much going on there, um, the, the river now, because they, they got nowhere to grow. They home in industrial area. They're fully built out. So most of theirs, most of their, mo- most of their planning has gone into fighting tolling in the last few months. That's where their efforts have been. So do you have what you need?
I do. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time. It was a great presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that brings us to, I think, we didn't have anything removed from consent, so go ahead. I got my teeny tiny font here. For in council communications, we'll start off with, uh, councillor Gonzalez, please.
I, I guess I have no, no new updates based on. I have no new updates on my committee work.
All right. Councillor Saco.
Um, I don't have any committee updates. I did go to the key leaders breakfast on Friday. Um, I just want to say great job there. Um, and it was very informative and, um, you know, been working on this tolling and, and trying to stay informed and involved. And I learned a lot of new things, so I was really glad I went. And again, great job.
Councillor Hillier.
Um, I was at the Winona Grange's, uh, Friday AM networking.
Um, I was at the Winona Grange's uh Friday AM networking on the morning of the key leaders. So I just wanted to say it was a wonderful event also. And I don't, I haven't been to any meetings, but I do know that before our next council meeting, there is a community gathering at Hazelbrook Middle School for um, parents or caregivers who might be concerned about um, there's children growing up in the digital age. It's called Screenagers Growing Up in the Digital Age. It's an award winning film that probes into the vulnerable corners of family life and depicts messy struggles over social media, video games and academics. The film offers solutions on how we can help our kids navigate the digital world. There'll be um, individual conversations and things. And if you're interested in that, please uh, go to Twalton Together's website and look at events.
Cool. That's, that's no easy uh.
And and there's also, I'm sorry, I should say, when this Wednesday night, there'll be a safety, this Tiger Twalton School District is uh, doing a safety forum and Chief Pickering will be there and so will the our two school resource officers. And um, I know there's been a lot of community um, comments a- as of late with with um, the safety of our students, not just digitally, but also um, in their school communities. And I, it's from six till eight PM at Twalton High School. I would encourage uh, folks to go if you're interested. We'll be there with Narcan and such.
Counselor Riss.
Yeah, I know um, council formal uh, meetings in the last couple of weeks. But um, just want to invite folks out there that if you're interested in attending the Borland, Borlandia, it's the gala the Borland Free Clinic um, has every year for a fundraiser. They uh, raise money for um, just uh, primary and urgent care, behavioral health, diabetes education. They do physical therapy, um, genicologists and vaccinations and also like mammograms. So if you're uh, and they don't say no to anyone. So if you need any of these services, they um, they're free. And uh, the way they support these kinds of services is through volunteers and raising funds through this gala. So it will be October sixth at six PM at the Oregon Golf Club. And it's um, you can find more information about the clinic, um, Borland Clinic dot org. Um, so support these kinds of uh, programs that we have in our community that serve our community. Thank you.
Counselor Pratt.
I went, uh, well, I listened on Zoom and watched that part of the Clackamas County Addictions Recovery Summit. And then they did breakout sections, which they didn't break out the people on Zoom. So I only got part of it, but um, they had a lot of people that had been recovering addicts and spoke to how this worked in other communities. And what they said is you just can't put people in homes, you have to have the wraparound services was the gist of what the message was. C four metro uh, meeting, we talked about the regional transportation plan, the gigantic list of Nexus projects. And nobody knows what's going on with that, what's going to happen with that. Um, C four toll strategy meeting. Um, oh, we, Counselor Sabas has been promoting the idea of express lanes and tolling just one lane for a couple of years now. And so ODOT came back, they got some expert to say that express lanes are evil and awful. It was terrible, in my opinion. And they also, um, well, um, I'm sure the mayor will speak to this, they talked about ARTAC and that um, with the pushing of our mayor. And I'm sure Counselors or Commissioner Sabas, they will let ARTAC go on. But what I heard was we'll let ARTAC go on, but we don't really um, have any need to listen or take under advisement what you say. So that was a little disappointing also. And then um, with the Greater Portland Inc. Breakfast that um, Counselor Gonzalez and the mayor were at was really interesting. And um, it sounded like um, really good news for Twalton and other suburbs as far as economic development. And then they went to the um, Chamber Key Leaders Breakfast. I thought um, the mayor and um, Representative Walters and Mayor Rory, because I can't say his last name, did a fantastic job and Mayor Rory stepped in at the last minute. And I thought, like, I have in my mind all the things that I had hoped they'd asked and they covered them all, so it was great. That's it.
Um, on the fourteenth of September, uh, did a tour of community warehouse with Senator Rob Wagner. Uh, he wasn't aware of um, the warehouse itself, uh, he was aware of what they did and he wanted to know more uh, to see how the state could help. What was interesting to me was they've outgrown that warehouse. They need, they need a hundred mattresses a week to fit the need right now. And that the facility is too small. Um, so they may be looking for another facility in the future, uh, because it's just, there's not enough room to store all the things they need. Uh, they've served one family every two hours, no, every four hours. Uh, because they don't want to push people through. Uh, but it was just eye opening on the need uh, that's there. And between folks who are uh, coming in from um, Ukraine and that kind of need refugees, uh, low income folks, uh, recently divorced spouses who have nothing that need something. So the need is out there uh, at all their locations, but uh, they are uh, it's just unbelievable how busy they are and walking back there. Uh, and later that afternoon, uh, Rep Walters was to have a town hall, but she was ill. So Senator Wagner and I met again to take on questions, give people updates, what's going on. Of course, half the conversation literally of the hour was tolling and what's going on with that. On the eighteenth was the ever famous ARTAC meeting uh, and the changes in tolling. Uh, ODOT has decided that tolling all lanes, all times on all of I five and two oh five doesn't work. It's too expensive, will take too long to implement. So they've come up uh, with this idea of zones. So there'll be zones and I five and two oh five that if you pass through that zone, you will pay a toll. And the decision is where they put those zones, they have an option two A and two B. The biggest difference being that in two B, uh, the zone between I five and Stafford Road is not told. Uh, so my comment to them was all you're doing is pushing all the traffic and all the diversion to the traffic circle at Stafford because that's where everyone's going to get off versus having all the uh, diversion starting at the hospital on Borland Road. That's the big difference. Uh, so there, they presented it, it was up for approval, they're going to work on it, uh, finesse it a bit. Those gaps where you don't have a, but pay a toll, they said, you know, that was to help people out is a joke. Uh, one of the gaps where you don't have to pay a toll is between I five and Nyberg Road going north. And my statement to them was that's a merging area. Nobody commutes in there, that's a small space. And the same thing going south between Carman Drive and Boone's Ferry Road wouldn't be told. Like again, because all this is a mess of merging cars. Um, so I I asked them to relook at it and a startling thing that was brought up that I brought up at ARTAC and uh, was brought up at the breakfast was if you look at ODOT's numbers and their graphic for these zones and tolling and the time saved on reduced congestion, all they had was the save time on two oh five was two to three minutes. And I asked, is that per zone or is that for the whole length of two oh five? Because I said, if that's for the whole length of two oh five, this is pretty damn expensive. Just for me to save three minutes, I pointed out Twalton moving forward, there were dropping about a million, a million, you know, to save three to five minutes in our little stretch of road. Uh, you know, we're getting way more bang of the buck here. Uh, but they were like, oh, we need to look at that, maybe that's wrong. I'm like, oh, God, this is what you're showing people, so. Um, and then the idea of Counsel Pratt said about the express lane, there, the the experts said, if you have any, you, one, you can only do it on a facility that has three lanes. The federal government says, no, no, you can't do it on a two lane segment. So on parts of two oh five and I five, you couldn't do an express lane. So the alternative is, okay, you take what other states have done, they've taken a existing HOV lanes and made them express lanes. That works. We brought up, okay, how about you throw on the third lane on each side on two oh five and make that the express line? Well, that might not work because the cost of construction will probably never be recovered by tolls. And we're like, okay, but wouldn't help? And they're like, well, what could happen is less people would take the toll road because there'd be less congestion on the uh, the free lanes. So then you'll never raise enough money to pay for the road. So as Council President Pratt said, basically, the long and short of it, ODOT said, no, you're not doing express, it's going to be all lanes. They did concede that tolling would only be from five AM to nine PM. So there is no nighttime tolling and tolls could be very, very small uh, during, you know, the low peaks during the day around noon or so. They're still evaluating that. And then finally on that, um, they're looking at the low income program. Right now, they've agreed that folks who are at two hundred percent of the federal uh, poverty level would be qualifying for uh, low income discount, but they're looking at going up to four hundred percent. Because that's more um, in line with the cost of living in the Portland Metro area. The problem is, well, okay, if you're decreasing amount of people, going to pay less, less revenue. And what was really sad is that when they look at other low income toll programs, that of all the people that are eligible, only five percent apply. President just pay the fee, even though the program's there, which is a shame. Uh, moving away from tolling, another sad meeting late in the day that was late for because we were driving from Portland to my house was the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Uh, the sad news about MSTIP, uh, MSTIP is ninety million dollars short right now for the projects that are on the books. They are looking to trim back, obviously, if your project is not under construction right now, you are going to probably looking at getting cuts on projects that are in design. The new phase of MSTIP, um, where the Washington County Coordinating Committee came up with forty-five projects we agreed on. That's a wash, that's probably going to get pushed down to ten projects through the county. And only those projects that connect cities to cities throughout the county will probably make the, make the grade. So our projects for Cyphole Road, that traffic circle, it's probably not going to survive because it doesn't help anybody except us. Even though it's a major facility, it's going to serve, you know, a potential new manufacturing industrial area. If it's not connecting cities, it's not going to make the list. Um, so M- MSTIP is in uh, uh, we're going to bring it up again, uh, obviously, because we're going to have to figure out the ten projects and go through all that vetting. Moving on, the GPI Summit, I thought was terrific about fixing Portland's image and that we need to seize the conversation, not let the press, you know, keep telling people that Portland's a miserable place, you know, people getting stoned in the street, blue tents. Yeah, we do have that, but it's slowly going away and there's a lot of good things going on. Uh, so we need to get that word out. Uh, the Clackamas County Chair Mayor's meeting was later that day. Uh, Chair Smith talked about that, the drug summit and the increased need for rehab in uh, Clackamas County. Uh, all the mayors uh, were on board on helping Clackamas County develop a, a drug rehab facility, which was terrific. She also, uh, Mayor Beatty of Milwaukee brought up, I know we talked about this a while ago, the Metro Natural Resource Mapping Project from Metro. I mean, I said that, the Metro Natural, Milwaukee is lost in it. Um, because Metro hasn't provided much assistance. And it sounds like according to Mayor Beatty, Metro is really not taking a lot of community input. This came up at the Washington County Coordinating Committee, but we were like, the only city is impacted because of all of our wetlands. So they wind up bringing up at C four because she's very concerned that Metro is just going to steamroll these mapping changes and rules over uh, the cities. Uh, and finally, two things, the key leaders breakfast, what I enjoyed about that was that it wasn't, I thought it was very equal, it wasn't biased. Um, we all got our shots in on on ODOT, obviously, but ODOT was able to respond. We all, you know, Senator McLean, I was, you know, I agreed with her on the comment that we need to come up with a way to fund our transportation projects. Uh, it doesn't, she, she's not fixed on tolling, we just got to come up with something and I'm like, let's do it. There's all the alternatives, let's put a package together that doesn't have tolling in it, that will maintain our roads. And I told the mayors will sign on it, we just don't want tolling in this present shape. Uh, and finally, uh, remember on September twenty seventh, the Special Subcommittee on Transportation starts meeting in Salem. This is one we want to pay attention to. This, that select committee that is going to hear all things transportation, including tolling, on how the city, uh, the state should progress on, should there be tolling, should be fee changes? How's the city, that's why I say the city, how's the state going to meet its needs for transportation? And part of that is, you know, they're looking at twenty twenty-five for this whiz bang uh, transportation package. But where's that money going to come from and what's going to be included? Is it going to be Nexus projects? How's the money going to be distributed? Uh, per Senator McLean, they're going to take these meetings on the road and they're not just going to be in Salem. So hopefully they'll come in this area like, I especially know they got to go to Clackamas County. So keep in tune with that. Uh, we're assuming the first meeting or two are going to be more like agenda setting, your, your homework. And they're not really going to get into it. Uh, so we're keeping eyes on that if we need to go into Salem and testify or if they're going to come out here. Because we told them it's super important that, we told Senator McLean that local input, city input has to be there because most representatives right now have zero idea of what tolling is and transportation financing and what the needs are, especially on a statewide basis. The assumption is that tolling is only going to be in the Portland Metro area and that's false. It will spread throughout the state, um, because the equity program, the equity issue was brought up about uh, why do folks in Clackamas County have to pay to get to work? Where someone in Hillsborough or Beaverton will ride twenty-six for free and folks out in Troutdale will be able to drive eighty-four for free. It's not equitable. Uh, so they're going to need to take, that their first meeting is September twenty-seventh in Salem. Yep, so it's coming up. Uh, I think it's going to be a bunch of, nothing really to concern ourselves with yet, until they come up with a calendar. And that's when we want to know, when they're going to have hearings that we can monitor. All right, and that's it. Sorry for going long, but it's been pretty busy the last two weeks. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion?
To adjourn.
All right. I got a motion, a second adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, good night, have a good evening.